Councilmember Murray.
Present.
Councilmember Payne Donovan.
Present.
Councilmember Ryan.
Here.
Councilmember Sonmore.
Here.
Mayor Protem Wall.
Here.
Councilmember Woodard.
Here.
Mayor Matsumoto Wright.
Here.
That concludes roll call. Thank you. Next on our agenda is the city manager's report.
Thank you very much, Mayor. Mayor Protem, members of council. Just a couple of things to mention this evening. I'm not used to sitting over here.[39.72][39.72](laughter) A couple of things to mention this evening. First, wanted to remind everyone that the meeting on July 3rd is canceled so that we can all go enjoy the fireworks celebration at Lake Malinger, and that the meeting on July 13th will be starting early at 6:00 p.m. in order to give council members the opportunity to attend the movies in the park event at Terrace Creek Park. That will be a very busy agenda on the 13th because of the cancellation and trying to keep things moving. So, got quite a few things on that agenda for you that evening. And finally, the thank you letters and certificates of appreciation to the outgoing board and commission members have been mailed. They were mailed today, so I want to make sure that you are aware of that. And that concludes my report. I'm happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Are there any questions, comments? Councilmember Woodard.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to confirm for July 3rd, we are not supposed to meet any time given space or location is. Be yourself, have a good time.
Well, so, we are going to introduce the mayor, and then the mayor is going to introduce each council member. So, I, we would like you to gather near the stage. We're going to do that at 6:30, and we'd like you to gather near the stage at about 6:20. And that map showing where the stage is and everything will be part of the email that I send out to all of you tomorrow, so you know where to go.
So, a portion of the park is cordoned off to be worked on, but apparently it's been cordoned off in the past anyways for safety reasons. In case people ask, that's why I thought if we, if we know why it's cordoned off, then if people ask us, we can say something. All right. Next on our agenda is the approval, no, review and approval of the stormwater engineering services on-call and stormwater comp plan update contract.
Okay. Thank you for making some time to talk to me about this contract. The background for this request is that specialized stormwater engineering services, our expertise are necessary to supplement in-house engineering staff capacity to meet the needs of engineering design and cost development for stormwater aging infrastructure repair and to meet current and future ecology city stormwater permit requirements. Recently, we, I ran a competitive process to identify firms that would be qualified to provide these services to the city. We had three proposals of those. Jacobs Engineering was selected. I would like to just mention that in the past, we've had Osborne Consulting providing these services, and they did a great job. We were actually able to complete 10 work orders under that contract, yeah, design a new pond, yeah, design a rockery, the 52nd project that I'm just going to talk to you about, a flooding and fish study, a storm watershed model, and also several projects to help the city support, to support tree planting, tree, street trees, and to assist parks in some of the work that they're doing. So, for this next cycle of the stormwater on-call, the very first work order will be a, some technical background for a water quality grant through ecology. So, they will help us prepare the grant for that. And also, the stormwater comprehensive plan is due to be renewed in 2024, so they will help us build that. And then you can see there's a whole selection of specialized services that this engineering firm will be supplying. This is an as-needed on-call contract with no commitment to spend. Authorization for work will be completed through individual work orders for specific projects, and work orders with a value of more than $75,000 will be brought to city council for review and approval. Total compensation for all tasks is not to exceed $1 million over a two-year term with the option to extend for two additional years in one-year increments. The funding for this contract will be provided by the Stormwater Utility Fund. The recommendation is at this meeting to move to authorize the city manager to execute the professional services agreement between the city and Jacobs Engineering for stormwater engineering services in an amount not to exceed $1 million. City council can accomplish this at this meeting with a motion to approve the contract since the next meeting is canceled due to 3rd of July. Are there any questions?
Any questions? Are you ready to? Go ahead, Mayor Protem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to authorize the city manager to execute an on-call contract with Jacobs Engineering for stormwater engineering services up to $1 million over two years with the option to extend an additional two years, city council can, sorry, two years, period.
It's, am I reading the right thing?
It can be extended past that for one-year increments, but maybe that's not what it says. Sorry.[418.21][418.21](laughter)
Yeah, what it says is we can approve it on the consent calendar, which-
Right. It's not true.
Not irrelevant, so.
Sorry.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. Do we need to have any discussion? Can we just go straight to vote?
Call for the question.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, are you doing the second one here, which is the review and approval of the 52nd Avenue Street and Storm Repair Project?
Yes, thank you. I have come to talk to the city council about this project before, but essentially, the summary is that there are two parallel stormwater pipes that run under 52nd Avenue South, sorry, 52nd Avenue West, south of 112th Street. The crews are aware that there is a problem with this area because the pavement is settling at the portion where the bike lane is and the sidewalk. The reason for this settling is that there are two severely cracked and offset stormwater pipes in this location, and there is, the trees around have grown into the pipes, so the pipes need to be frequently cleared of roots in order to resolve blockages. So, this project will replace the two failed stormwater pipes with one larger pipe and associated stormwater drainage structures. In addition, road surface and striping improvements will be included as part of the project due to poor condition of the pavement in this area. The engineering estimate developed for the project's construction was between $470,000 and $530,000. Hundred thousand, sorry. To accomplish this project, staff is proposing a contract with Rodarte Construction. This was a competitive bid. We had three bidders, and the lowest responsive and responsible bid was received from Rodarte Construction in the amount of nine, $496,984. So, construction contracts of this nature are based on the unit price for each bid item, but in order to make a contingency for any unexpected costs with result, that result from this project, the, I'm requesting that the price be, include a 15% contingency of the total bid price, bringing the expenditure allocation request for the contract to $571,532. The funding for this contract will be provided by the Stormwater Fund for Aging Infrastructure Repair and Replacement with additional funding from the road, for the road improvements from the City Street Fund. The advantages of this project is that it increases driver, bicyclist, and pedestrian safety in a known problem area, reduces the risk of costly road failure repair on 52nd Avenue West, and reduces long-term stormwater maintenance costs for ratepayers. The disadvantage is, of course, the cost of the project. Staff recommends that the city council approve the construction contract with Rodarte Construction to replace the stormwater system and road surface on 32nd Avenue West, south of 212th Street. Council can accomplish this as part of a motion to approve during this meeting since the council will be involved in 3rd of July celebrations. Are there any questions?
Are there?
Yes.
Councilmember Ryan?
Hello.
Hi.
It sounds like, is this right by the 7-Eleven there?
Yes.
And then there's the construction going on in the property behind 7-Eleven?
Yes, that's correct.
So, does, then I guess there has to be, is communication with that project needed for this project, so?
Yes, we have been working with them, and we are actually allowing them to do something we wouldn't normally allow, which is for them to blind connect into the existing system, and then we will come back and put in a junction at that location. So, it's, we've been, I've been out there in the field talking to them about the elevations of the pipes, etc.
Okay, great. Sounds good. Thank you.
Councilmember Payne Donovan?
Thank you, Mayor. Well, Rick stole the first part of my question, but I think the comment I did want to make is that, you know, you point out the benefit to pedestrians and cyclists, and I personally know that that's a bit treacherous coming down the hill there for cyclists. And since we have a bike lane and there is sort of uneven surface there, it's, it's a real problem. I know of two people personally who've crashed there on their bicycles. One who had to be, get an aid car, some ground transport to a medical facility. And, you know, I think we get lots of comments from, I'm just speaking to the necessity of doing work like this, because I know that we get lots of complaints about road surfaces and our infrastructure. So, I think this is timely and, you know, key to keeping our infrastructure together.
I mean, as a bicycle commuter myself, I find that kind of chilling.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Councilmember Woodard?
I'm sorry to hear that. I'm glad you're okay. So, I want to first acknowledge our public works director is here with us as well, so if you need to punt my meandering set of questions, feel free to do so. And I want to acknowledge, there's a hornet's nest, and watch Steve just poke at it, poke, poke, poke. The hornet's nest is the water bills. What? So, folks are questioning why it is so high. I want to see whether or not this is an example of this is why the water bills are so high. So, I want to begin with, how did we discover those pipes were there? Because I remember being on council, we didn't have cameras. We had to contract out, so if that's part of our process of the system that we invested in so that we could start to diagnose and determine what's going on with our pipes, I'd love to hear that, because that would be part of why is my water bill so high. Not to mention, thank you for placing where this is. I think when we throw cross streets and numbers out there and directions, front end of the number, the back end, people go, I don't know where that is. But everybody knows where 7-Eleven is. And catastrophic fail rings differently if I can't get to 7-Eleven than it does if it's somewhere out in the middle of nowhere. So, again, I'm hoping that we tie that back into, this is why we had to look at our rates and bring them up to parity. We are not charging, we are not getting Lear jets. We are up to parity. I think we're not even at parity yet. We're trying to still get to parity. But nonetheless, if you can walk us through any other pieces of this, so that the residents get a better idea of how their money is being spent. Because to me, this is excellent example of how we have been trying our best to bring worlds together. Somebody's got to pay for it. Everybody's using the system. This is not a system you want to fail, let alone lose the stuff above it in the form of roads, please. I think there was a question in there. Feel free to address it in there, if you want to.
Well, thank you, because I think that is a very valid question. The way, just the way that this project came about was that the crews had identified that they were having to do pavement repair in this location, and it just didn't seem like things were right. So, back in 2020, I got a small contract to investigate the known stormwater program problems in the city and to clean and CCTV those pipes. This was one of the few sites where it came backwards, with like, it was too complicated for the crews to pick it up, to fix it on their own, and the damage was too severe. So, we investigated various options to try to find the least cost option that would actually fix the problem. For example, we made decisions about abandoning pipes rather than, and filling, filling them rather than removing them, because that's a more expensive option and could lead to more, you know, sort of more settling and more voids. But, I think the important message is that when you do good thorough engineering, which takes a while, you're able to find ways to do the project in the most efficient and cost-effective and safe way. Some of the cost of this project was taken on voluntarily because when we were out there, we realized how bad the pavement was. You know, there were certain sections of the pavement which could not be just overlaying. They just had to be full depth restored. And so, that added cost to the project, but we thought, well, we're going to be out there anyway ripping it up. Why don't we just do a really good job, and we won't have to come back here again? So, that's part of it. I think, hopefully, that helps to explain some of the costs.
Yeah, I mean, again, I'm looking at it from a resident's perspective of all they see is my water bill's gone up, but they're not seeing, well, here's how that money is being exercised in your best interest. And again, this one seems like a clear example of, this could have gone on much longer. It has nothing to do with the project that's there, or go coordinate with them. And then, you know, when these things do surface, unfortunately, surface is gone, it collapses, and people get injured.
Yeah, I mean, I think one thing we discovered through the sources, through the investigation of this project was what a large drainage area this, you know, this strains. It comes all, it goes all the way up through a whole area that's full of condos and things like that. So, it's really a critical drainage point, and we need, we need to fix it. If we don't do anything about it, it's just going to get worse and worse. And it's expensive to repair projects in the road. It just is. It's really something we tried to find the least cost option to do, but in this case, it is a full replacement.
All right. So, all of my questions were already asked. But it's, I wanted to also know if it was on the same side of the street as the new construction that's going in. So, that's, that's great, because if it's on the other side, it's a different story.
It is actually across the street from the new Terrace View. It's going to be along the-
Oh, it is.
East side.
Okay.
Yes, but the connection from Terrace View will be coming in there. And it's entirely possible that the other parcel on the other side will also be redeveloped and will connect into the new system.
Hopefully, that one will, I think that corner is going to start showing some development. Right. Okay, so, any, any other questions before we go on to Mayor Protem? Mayor Protem, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Move to authorize city manager to execute the 52nd Storm Repair Contract with Rodarte Construction in the amount of, not to exceed $571,532, with the city manager being authorized to execute necessary change orders up to $74,547, and authorize final project acceptance.
Second.
Case been moved and seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
All right, so, next on our agenda is the review of the pedestrian plaza art selection by the Arts Commission. We were right by that plaza today. We'll talk about it later.
Worked. Okay, good evening, Mayor Protem and councilmembers. I'm Jeff Betts, Recreation and Parks Director. And we are going to take a look at the 1% for the arts for the pedestrian plaza. So, tonight, I'm going to review the Arts Advisory Commission's recommendation, but additionally, we're going to ask council for action to approve that recommendation, or a recommendation of your own, either way. So, the reason why we're doing both, which we don't typically do, is review and approval is, as you know, July 3rd is when the meeting date would have been, next week, and we have a community event for all of us to enjoy. So, appreciate you entertaining both review and approval tonight. So, just some quick background information on this. The city established a 1% for the arts program in 1976, and that allotted 1% of the cost of parks or facilities, construction projects, for public works of art. In 1981, additionally, the council adopted guidelines for administering that 1% program. So, those guidelines are what instructs the Arts Commission to choose the selection panel and how to advertise for prospective artists. So, to that end, in October of 2022, the city put out a call for artists, and this was for a large-scale visual art piece in the pedestrian plaza, and that's near the Future Light Rail Station, which you visited today, at the corner of 236 and Van Ryse Boulevard. The scope of the work for the project is clearly defined that the artwork should contribute to the place-making and also take into consideration of different audiences and the community itself that will engage with the work. So, the sculpture will be located at the center of the plaza, which will be accompanied with plantings and surrounded by benches. The artist was tasked with creating a thematic or visual connection to Mount Lake Terrace with its past and also its future, and how that could interact with adjacent light rail station. So, we utilized an online process called CAFE. It's the same one that we utilize for the City Hall Art, and that stands for Call for Entry, sort of. We received 30 entries, and a selection panel, which was comprised of members of the Arts Advisory Commission, one city staff person, and members of the public. They reviewed the applicant's resumes and some of their previous works of art. The panel was able to reduce that number to four finalists, and then those finalists were given a small stipend to create examples of their work, which they then gave 30-minute presentations here in this very room on April 19th to the community, and they were able to explain some of the art and their views, and they utilized PowerPoint presentations to do so. I did attach all of those presentations in the council agenda, so you could fully view all the pages related to those. There were a few, I'd say a few dozen people in attendance, and some of the questions that were asked by some of the audience members were, you know, how will these pieces interact with the public? Will they be kinetic or stationary? Is there lighting? And also, the big one for me would be, what can we expect from maintenance and longevity? You know, what is it that our crews are going to have to do, or, all those kinds of questions are very important from the public. So, on to the art. So, the four artists that presented were BK Choi, John Fleming, Miguel Edwards, and Souvenar Maradin. So, each one of them were very accomplished. We were very happy with these four finalists, and they all did a very good job presenting their ideas. So, I'm not going to explain each piece of art, but I will show you. I don't know if it's best if I explain each one of them. It's up to the eye-to-beholder, I think, to take in the visual art. I'm sorry. So, this was BK Choi's presentation, and as you could see, it's like a perforated steel structure in the middle that he modeled in a kind of a 3D modeling system.
Go ahead.
When you look at this in scale, can you, do you mind just telling us how big it is? Because it could look like something else than, than it actually is, and it just kind of helps with comparison, because I know we have one that's very big, and so I was just kind of, if you know, the feet size?
Yes, and I think that question was asked of him in the presentation, and I think it was over 20 feet tall.
Thank you.
But, yeah, it's, this is a decent-sized structure, and he has a whole story that he utilized in his presentation, and you could kind of see that in the individual attachment. But, he utilized some Korean architectural ideas, then I think it's also some of the places that he's seen and been to, and how that related to Mount Lake Terrace to him. BK was actually from Mount Lake Terrace. Then there's John Fleming, and he had, each artist was allowed to do two presentations, or actually have, I should say, two different pieces of art. So, the two that, that Mr. Fleming proposed was Votive and Uplift, and Votive is 20-foot tall, and it had pieces of steel that would reflect, and one of these was set up to be different animals that were native to the area. And then the other one was set to be potentially kind of a community input program, where he would gather ideas of what names and different languages, or nouns and verbs, different ideas of what Mount Lake Terrace would mean to them, to people that lived here or visited, and he would cut those out in a similar fashion and mount as well. And they were stationary pieces of stainless steel, but they would reflect with the sun, and they would also project those images on the ground, is the idea. So, the option B is a 28-foot-tall structure as well, very similar, just little different shapes. And the third artist was Miguel Edwards. His two proposed pieces of art was Penumbra Ascent on the left here on this image, and it has multiple colors of purple and orange and red, and it also had some, some lighting at the very tip, that the yellow greenish piece on the very tip had some lighting in there. And then additionally, the other piece of art was the Rise Together, and that also had lighting associated in different parts. He, he also proposed some interactive lighting, and that would be built into the structures where if somebody moved close to one side or another, the lighting would change, and depending how many people were standing, and it was kind of a smart lighting system. And the last artist was Souvenar Maradin, and she had two different proposals she brought. One was called Fragile Habitats, and the other one was Blooming Stones. And she had a very good story as well with her ideas that she came through with, and I won't try to explain all of it, but I'll let you look at it yourself. The size of this one, I think these were much smaller pieces. I think Fragile Habitats was a little bit under 20 feet, and then the Blooming Stones was even smaller than that. Okay, so, after much consideration, and I blew the punchline here, I changed the slide before I even read this part, but the art selection panel, as well as the Arts Commission, they did select Miguel Edwards' Rise Against, or I'm sorry, Rise Together for the pedestrian plaza. The decision was affirmed by the Arts Advisory Commission, and that was the recommendation they made to council. So, a few things about Rise Together. Based in, from Miguel's presentation, it's a deconstructed sphere using rolled steel square tube as the primary building block that is exemplified by these examples that are shown, and it's a spiral of graduated sizes and hues. This was, the Arts Commission had some ideas on how- This was, the arts commission had some ideas on how we could change this potentially, a little bit manipulated with the artist. So if this was affirmed by the council, the arts commission would potentially work with that artist. So maybe this was a little less climbable. That was one of the issues that somebody had, didn't want people climbing it, although, as I mentioned, there would be plant material all throughout that area. And in reality, anything and everything you build is climbable. There's, people climb stop signs, which you wouldn't think is possible, but they do it.
Is that from experience? Sorry, I was waiting for...
Sorry, I just, you were smiling, and I thought, well, maybe.
Actually, it was one of the artists that said that during that meeting, so I just took their idea on that one. So as I mentioned, one of the distinct options was interactive lighting or sound, and I think that is something that the arts commission is interested in and trying to incorporate something interactive. There are some concerns with how that could be maintained, and I think that was something we would look at in an agreement or contract that we have with that artist that we bring back to the council. So what we'd like to do is, upon approval of the artist or an artist by council, that we would work with them and the Arts Advisory Commission and kind of probably try to refine this a little bit, and then try to closely match any of the requirements to the site design, so we'd bring in the architect of the site a little bit to make sure that we're doing everything we need to to fit the space correctly. And then we would come back to council with a contract with the artist. So we anticipate design and fabrication to be completed by next spring and then summer. Summer or fall would be installation. And that's really to coincide with when we hope that we're going to be doing construction and it be completed in time for revenue service. Are there any questions?
Are there any questions, comments? Oh, Mayor Pro Tem? Oh, Councilmember Murray?
Thank you, Mayor, and Mayor Pro Tem, and thank you, Jeff, for coming and presenting, and thank you to, I mean, the arts commission and, you know, the Recreation and Parks Commission and the folks involved in the selection process and all of the artists. It was an extensive process. I had a chance to sit in on the presentations from the four artists when they came, and it was really interesting to hear, as somebody who is not an artist, it was very interesting to hear kind of their thought process and how they connected it to our community, and they all had obviously spent a lot of time and intention around their proposals and putting them together. So appreciate all of that work that has gone into getting us to this place. You know, and I will say, I love the, I think I love the idea behind this one in particular. I mean, I don't know if it's called out here, but I think it talks about kind of like, you know, the support of one another that the different pieces of it bring, which I thought was a really great, you know, I think, very connected to, I think, what we think about and what we hear from our community when they think about one another. I guess I definitely, I had heard those concerns about kind of the, you know, the audio and the lights and how we maintain some of those things. So I mean, I guess I would love to hear more about that, you know, in the, I guess in the future. It's a question mark to be answered, it sounds like. But I guess the one thing I would love thoughts on, Jeff, because I did, it was interesting, as somebody who wasn't on council, as we started this process, it looks like back in 2018, one of the artists brought forward some of the community open house feedback as part of it, and kind of what the community had hoped for when we started this process. It felt like a little different than kind of where we landed in the process, and so they were hoping for a reflection of Mount Lake Terrace and mountains and the lake and the terrace, and there was a lot of, like, actual signage around, like, two of the three options at the time. There was a waterfall sign, a lighted sign, and a community tree. Mayor Pro Tem knows that I'm a big fan of water, and I have mostly let that dream go, although, you know, I would always welcome if you could sneak it in there somewhere. But I think there, I guess my question for you is, with any of these, there's not kind of that wayfinding, like, this is Mount Lake Terrace for folks that are on the light rail and going by, and hopefully, you know, enticing them to stop and recognize, you know, us as a community. And so I'm curious if there's been conversation, given that's not the direction that this kind of piece of art has gone, about something to supplement it in order to ensure that folks do know, as they are traveling through our community, that we're here. And I think, you know, so I guess I'd just be, I'm going to put a period there, or a question mark there, and ask if there's been conversation about that.
Well, in the plaza design itself, if you remember, on the corner, there is going to be a lit sign.
Okay.
For Mount Lake Terrace, that it's going to be large, and you'll be able to see that.
Okay.
And it'll be lit, so at night you'll be able to see it.
Okay.
Yeah, it's changed quite a few times, you're right. From the original, when we went to the original public meeting, there was all those different ideas, right? But I think it's going to be more of a thematic, right? You're going to see that, and you'll kind of put two and two together that it's Mount Lake Terrace. We also have the sign, but I think it's more of a, if somebody sees it, then they're going to be thinking that this is a Mount Lake Terrace sculpture, hopefully, right?
Well, I do love, I mean, again, I think the story behind it is very connected to, I think, a lot of what we talk about as a council, when we talk about kind of our vision for the community, as well as, I think, what we hear from our community that they value and want to maintain that connectivity and community feeling. And so I do appreciate those aspects of it, and I do appreciate that they went with one that is, their recommendation is one that has some interactivity, because I do think that is the other piece that I think makes for good space and good, I mean, I think it entices people to be there and to interact with the art, and so I appreciate that very much, and appreciate the presentation, Jeff.
Anyone else? Mayor Pro Tem?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Well, Councilmember Murray has mostly let it go. I have not. But I mean, I accept that we're going a different direction, but I would, I really like this waterfall sign right here. Now, I would love to see that be the entrance into Mount Lake Terrace since Noemish County, and this is... I just like this whole thing that, you know, mountains, lake and water, and terraces, and put that into a lighted Mount Lake Terrace waterfall sign with splash pads. I could go on, and I'd love to, but there are some incredible water feature art that I've seen in other communities that I, and ours right here, that I love, and I'd love to see more of it. And maybe we're not going to get it there, even though that would be the appropriate place for it as the entrance to Mount Lake Terrace. But I'm going to keep plugging any water features we can plug in to get into our parks anywhere we can, and encourage us to continue looking at those opportunities, finding those opportunities and looking at ways to make it happen. Thank you.
If you saw a question there, feel free to... Question's, where's the splash pad?
Yeah, I don't know if I want to answer that question, but, okay, good. Yeah, there's no splash pad there, but there are plans in the Balger Park master plan for a splash pad. Just needs funding.
Don't look at me.
Yeah, don't look down here.
I mean, I will say, as somebody who dropped one of my children off at Edmund City Park prior to coming to the council meeting tonight, there was a lot of community members there, including some terrace park folks, so it's definitely a hot draw on these warm summer days that we're having, so I'd love to see it, too.
Edmonds can pay for the repairs.
Find a way.
Right, okay. Well, I have been taking pictures of water features everywhere I travel as ideas. I just haven't shared it with you guys yet, but...
We can delay this decision. Happy to give you the opportunity to show it.
Well, you travel more than I do. You probably have a whole bunch more.
I do have many.
I know. Okay, so are we going to go on to the motion? Oh, Councilmember Woodard?
Thank you, Mayor, and I think Councilmember Sonmore might want to weigh in as well. I just wanted to double back and also weigh in with a, on the record, thank you to the arts commission and to the subcommittee, sounds like it was a subcommittee. I, too, had the opportunity to be in this space and to see how hard that was, to have to then come back and figure out, well, which one will we go with? I also want to say thank you for going with one and not trying to figure out how to blend two, it's like, make a decision. Thank you for doing that. That said, I do want to hope that the artists themselves check back in to hear how the council received this news, and just want to be as clear as possible, thank you all, four of you. I think there's more than that when you added your partners in there, but for the four projects, what an absolutely beautiful representation of our city each of you delivered to us. I think under different circumstances, any of those would have risen to the top, but it was just such a powerful medium to see our city through your eyes, and just want to be as clear as possible how honored we were and thankful that you did so. I have interacted with many of your artwork around the city, and to know that one of you was going to land in this city was just, just warms my heart. That said, I hope our 1% continues to grow, meaning that we'll have this opportunity again, and please, 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 if you're not hearing it loud and clears, do, if it fits your spirit at the time, put something in, whatever that may be. We have a lot of growth on our way, which means we should have a lot more beautiful artwork in this city, and all four of you were outstanding. Thank you.
Does the 1% also include, is like, the building that Millstream is putting up, do they have to put artwork in? Terrace Station, do they have to put artwork in? None of these are...
No, this is for, this is public infrastructure, so any city projects we entertain.
Because I noticed that there's artwork over in Vineyard Park, and so those are the owners of that who put in their own. So we can encourage owners like Millstream and Terrace Station to put in artwork, and they can pay for the maintenance. All right, anyone else before we go on to... All right. Go ahead. Is someone else?
I'm sorry, my God. I'm just sitting back this time because I've done it quite a few times, looking at 1% of the art, and I'm listening to Brian, and I'm like, yeah, yeah. But what it is, I wanted to take back that comment, I mean, not that I was mocking it, but it's in the eye of the beholder, right? So with artwork, a lot of times you can't go wrong. It's what kind of makes you feel good at the time, looking at it. And I really like number one, because I like the colors. And number two is about animals, so I related to the animals. Three, I was trying to understand the sounds and if the lighting would work, but I just thought it was pretty. When I worked at the mall, we had big sculptures in there, and people would come by and bang on them. Now they're out in the parks because they were too loud, and so I was thinking about that. And the last one, of course, was beautiful, too, and I was just wondering how it would hold up. And so those were going through my mind, but the one thing I do know is, out here, we fought so hard on the arts commission to get the bronze sculpture, because that's what the committee wanted, and the architect wanted something bigger, and we were kind of fighting against him, but he was right. You know, so each time you do one of these, you learn something new and you take your own opinion, but you also look, and he listened to what other people say, because I can't tell you for how many years we've been wanting something that says Mount Lake Terrace out there, that really says Mount Lake Terrace, and none of them say Mount Lake Terrace on them. So I get what you're saying, because I was like, he's right, you know, we've been wanting that for so long. So if we had to make a decision today, I'm fine with the decision that the arts made. I know most of them, I know they put their heart and passion into looking at artwork, and so I know we can't go wrong, and maybe Brian has something else that we maybe would have to look at. But I did go back to the one you were talking about, and I did like the overhead one, so I mean, if we want more conversation on it, we can, but overall, I don't think we're going to go wrong. You know, the water thing out here, I'm not so happy with most of the time, but splash pads in a park, I get, so good conversation.
Okay, go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, and I agree. I mean, I'm going to make the motion in a minute, and don't take my comments wrong. All four were beautiful pieces of work. I'd love to see any and all of them in Mount Lake Terrace, and this is a good choice. I just love water. But I will move to approve the Arts Advisory Commission recommendation to continue working with Miguel Edwards to create the chosen artwork, Rise Together, for the pedestrian plaza.
So it's been moved in second, Ed? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is public comments. Do we have any public comments?
I suck that one up.
I have a few notes for council comments here.
There's no public comments.
There's nobody here?
There are no public comments.
And there's nobody in the virtual audience?
No one signed up, no one's in the audience, and no one's in the virtual audience.
All right, so next is council comments. Does anyone have any council comments? Wow, okay, I'll start with my list then. First of all, I just wanted to say that the artwork, the new artwork at the Linwood Garage is one of the first times I just looked up and thought, oh, my God, this is art. The hummingbird and that wall, it's, because, I'm sorry about this Linwood, but I always said that if you wanted to see what not to get, go to the Linwood Transit Center for art, because it just, that artwork in the Linwood Transit Center, every time I drove by it, I went, oh, no, what a waste of money, and just drove on. This artwork in the parking garage is absolutely fabulous, and would like to see more of that. The other thing is, and Steve covered the water bills, because I'm still hearing from people out there going, why is it so high? Why is it so high? And some of their water bills really do amaze me. Why is it that high? But I know mine is high, too, so, and everyone's paying it. So I think people forget that all seven of us, every one of us lives here in this city. We drive those streets that they complain about, that they say, they insinuate that we don't know that these streets are falling apart, and yet we're driving on it, too. And then we're paying our water bills, just like they are. So I wanted to talk about the fact, oh, in the senior center parking lot, are we filling up potholes over there with our new machine? I'm asking you, Jesse. Because I noticed that there were a few repairs there, and I thought, oh, our new machine is getting some work out.
We're not using our new machine at this point, but we are filling the pothole, so...
But you are filling it?
Yes, ma'am, yes.
I noticed that, and I thought, oh, my God, we're actually doing something, so great. Not that it was your fault, it was probably ours for not following up on a lot of stuff. And then I wanted to talk about our tour today, because it's all fresh in our minds, and we're not going to have a lot of time the next time we meet to talk about it, but what did you think of the tour of our light rail station before it opens? Does anyone have anything to say?
Well, Mayor, for any endeavoring press who are listening to this recording here shortly thereafter, or shortly here in the future, I think there's some key takeaways that came from the tour that I think we'll very quickly see in the next month or two, some real progress in that intersection and how cars and pedestrians and, you know, and buses even begin to come back to that space. So I think we'll see that surface parking lot, we heard that that surface parking lot will be asphalted here shortly, we'll be seeing buses, community transit buses here in the coming weeks, test out the new transit loop there, and, you know, as we saw today, we'll be having, there'll be very visible changes to that space in this, you know, this summer. So I think that will be exciting and sort of signals the, you know, nearing completion of the station, but otherwise, I'd... of the station, but, um, you know, otherwise, I'd comment on how pleased I was to be up on the, on top of the platform and to be able to see all around, to see down nearly to Ballenger Park and to see the Cascades and the Olympics, and, um, yeah, it's going to be a real game changer, as we know, but to experience it, I think, you know, and to think about, you know, the town center, um, you know, the town center land use expectations we've set and will continue to fiddle with, it really is a chance, or to be up there and to look, you know, up 236th and to think about, you know, how much things will be changing in the coming years, I think is, you know, it was both an exciting time for me as a, you know, someone who's been interested in the project for a long time, but also as a, you know, to sit here on council as a leader for the community and think about, you know, what will it be like for someone who's walking from their house or driving from their house to get to light rail, because it will be a real, you know, hub, a center of gravity for our community, and I think it's important for us to sort of think about what it means to be a, an increasingly transit-oriented community and, you know, how are we building things, how are we problem-solving, and how are we, you know, planning for all that related experience? So, yeah, I find it, found it a very stimulating and exciting time.
Well, and, um, the fact that we actually have bathrooms, two really nice bathrooms, and they're located on the bottom level where the parking is, so it's not up just for the light rail people, it's for the people down, anyone more accessible.
We should note for the record how effective we are. We should note for the record how effective we are. Last time Sound Transit was out here and there were no bathrooms, we complained about it and tell how important it is, and suddenly we're there and there's bathrooms.
Well, Brian, I think that's a, you jest, but we, you know, we heard less than, well, say, a month and a half ago that bathrooms wouldn't be happening. I had a chance at the Seashore Transportation Forum to bring that up to the Sound Transit CEO, and she said, you know, we're talking about it, but we don't have an answer. And then today, you know, the mayor got the good news from the project manager, so I think we, you know, I'm not sure that any other locality can say that, you know, councils, or as you know, I mean, it's been a wish list item, and we've fought hard for it for over a decade, right? I think it's something to pat ourselves on our back for.
Well, I sort of remember Councilmember Sonmore asking that, those questions 10 years ago, and not stopping until they answered, so, thank you, Laura. Um, okay. Oh, Councilmember Woodard?
Yeah, I definitely wanted to weigh in. Horrible experience. No, please. Yeah, no, absolutely fabulous, so really thank you, whoever organized it, and all the needling, I know it was coming from me to get us out there, and thanks for the audible at the end. I don't know that I would have stopped needling if we didn't get on those tracks, so I'm glad they let us walk on the track for a little bit, and just so you at home know, I tried to run the shoreline, but didn't get that far. It was nice. That said, though, I wanted to actually pause and say congratulations to Shoreline on that Raze grant and the ability to now build that footbridge across the freeway. What an absolutely, talk about game-changing, game-changing experience. If I remember correctly, I think they said it was like 76,000 households will automatically be opened up to the now half mile away from the station, just by being able to walk across the freeway, like you can do with the John Lewis Memorial Bridge further south at Northgate, but just congratulations on that Raze grant, nothing but love, even though you're King County. Uh, that said, I did want to acknowledge as well, congratulations to Mount Lake Terrace. I don't know how many of you realize, you had to go, well, to be fair, you can now do it on your phone, if you're one of those folks, that's recent technology, but for those of us who aren't that savvy, you'd have to go up to Linwood Ride Store to add money to your card. Now, we will have in what appeared to be a pretty cool-looking station right down on the ground floor, which makes us, in my heart of hearts, a real station, because if you have to go somewhere else to get your actual needs, you're just a halfway point, and so for that to recognize that that's also going to open up a lot of opportunities, just more power to you all. Uh, but again, what a wonderful experience, thank you. I don't think there's very many council perks, but I am darn sure putting this one in the council highlights, because we got to do something folks won't get to do unless they work there, and I don't want to work there, I love the jobs I have, so, thanks for the opportunity to say.
Yeah, so that's the Orca vendor machine that they're going to, that put in, and I thought, wow. Um, Councilmember Payne Donovan?
I think, I'd also like to tack on that, you know, it's worth thanking Skanska and all the trades there who are building the thing. Um, you know, we were a little bit underfoot for some of the ironworkers and other trades who are, you know, doing their job to get this done, you know, hopefully in the next year, 14 months or so, and, you know, it wouldn't have happened without a lot of personnel or so, I think that's worth noting for the record while we're waxing poetic.
Also, for the public, they're going to see everything done from the outside, and then it's, they're going to be told it's another year before it's going to open, because they don't realize all the testing that needs to get done so that it's safe for us to be on it. So if people do ask, you know, maybe we can mention to people who are talking about it going, why isn't it opening? It's, it looks like it's completely done. Landscaping is in, everything is done, but...
It's going to be safe.
Right. Councilmember Sonmore?
Um, thank you, Mayor. I heard the bottom piece of the parking lot would be poured in August, so it'll look like it's coming along quite quickly, but the one takeaway I had is I had some conversation about security, and one with the restroom is, you just can't go in there, you have to be buzzed to go in there by security, so you ring a buzzer and security's right there and they'll let you in. So that combats that need of having people camp in the bathroom and brings a sense of security into our neighborhood, as well as they have signs that they're putting in all the cars that will say, call this number if you're having problems, so when you get off, there'll be somebody right there to help. And they're looking at three different security contracts, and then I know our city manager mentioned today that they're looking with Snohomish County Sheriff's Office, so any piece of security is good security, because if we want that to be very successful, I think we all need to be safe. And they're looking at how to not get people to sleep on the trains. They say that they have people sleeping, the same people a lot of times are on the trains every day, and looking at how they can combat that and where to bring them so that they have different places to go, but that was a big win to hear about that today is, they are taking it seriously. A lot of times when we've talked about it, it doesn't, it didn't feel like they were taking it as seriously, probably because they were doing some background work, but I was happy to hear that today.
All right, anyone else? Hey, well, that was a great trip, trip. Great tour. Thank you. All right, so if we have nothing else, I am going to, oop, yep, that is, our next on our agenda, adjournment. We are adjourned. One hour. Record.